Ready, it's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. First of all, thank you everybody for joining us, we're always happy to have you here. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion to adopt the agenda?
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, all of those in favor, please raise your hands. And we've got five of us? No, six of us, sorry. And do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all of those in favor, please raise your hands. And we've got six. Okay, so, next we have Board of Education acknowledgements. And first of all, the Board has a statement that they want to share with all of you. There has been much public discussion regarding the Board of Education enforcement of board policy, IFA, classroom displays, and the removal of safe zone signs. This decision was a directive by the Board to the Superintendent as part of the December Executive Session as it related to the Superintendent's evaluation. The Board believes all areas of a school should be safe for all students. Board members always appreciate hearing from community members and students. Our administration worked with interested students to reestablish the GSA club. For those unfamiliar, that is the Gay-Straight Alliance. Their first meeting was held on April 17th. The club is allowed to hang school-approved signs. Administration will continue to work closely with students and staff to make sure our entire school is safe, and we want every student to be supported so they can learn, grow, and reach their full potential. The Board will make no further comment regarding this issue. Next up, we have Employee of the Month. And we've got two. If you remember, we celebrate two employees each month. First of all, Megan Olson, and if you're here, you can come up. And you've come to class with us back once. I'm just gonna share with you what was shared to get you nominated for this. You have been nominated by your peers and/or members of the public for your exemplary work. Megan goes above and beyond for her students. She takes the time to make sure kids' needs are met. She made my son fall in love with school. And years later, he still loves school. She puts her heart and soul into assisting and guiding students. So, thank you, Megan. That's the popular item. And then I believe Laura Lee would like to get your picture.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, and then our next employee of the month is Angie Wolf. So Angie, you have been nominated by your peers and/or members of the public for your exemplary work. Angie is the heart of our lunchroom. She goes above and beyond to make sure our students feel valued and cared for. Her genuine kindness and personal connection with each student create a welcoming environment where everyone feels at home. Angie doesn't just serve meals, she serves up smiles, encouragement, and a sense of belonging.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And are there any other acknowledgements from the Board? Okay, we will move on to administrators. We have a volunteer who would like to go first?
Sure. You bet, you bet, I'll go. Hey, so, wanted to celebrate teachers last week during Teacher Appreciation Week, and so, we threw the whole staff in and out because it takes the whole village to raise our kids. And so, just kinda wanted to share, we had a nacho bar one day for them, we grilled hamburgers and hot dogs, we had a breakfast parfait, we provided Sonic drinks one day, and then we did nothing but cakes for another day. And so, it was a great week, and so, I know that our staff was really appreciative of that. I wanna talk a little bit about some student leaders in our building with our K-members, kinda providing some leadership and then also some wellness. So Savannah Rubbles, Alexandra Doherty, Elena Davidson, and Presley Kelly worked with Haley Upshaw from the Miami County Health Department, and they worked to create an educational video on the dangers of APB. And so, that's getting shared with our kids this week during their seminar time. And so, that's awesome that our kids were involved in that. Kinda moving to art and music, we had an Art and STEM night last Monday, which was in conjunction with our Spring Pops concert. And I know it was well-attended because I was over here at the stadium working the JV League track meet, and when we got finished, people were leaving, and that parking lot was jam-packed full of people. And so, I know it was well-attended, and so definitely appreciative of that. And then we had our district band concert last Wednesday. And so, just another great opportunity for our kids to be on display, for our patrons to be able to see. Also, just kinda my last little bit, we've got some trips planned for our kids. That's fun, just kinda the end-of-the-year deal that we like to take all of the kids to. And so, our eighth graders will travel the world to fun this week. And seventh grade goes to main event tomorrow. And then we have sixth graders that are going to see a movie next week. And so, just a lot of things as we kinda end up the school year, so wanted to be able to share that with you.
Thank you. Lots of fun stuff.
I'll just piggyback on more. Because I wanna make sure I recognize our student athletes and coaches from the Lake Track Meet. They did a phenomenal job. We had several broken records this year, and so, I wanna make sure that we acknowledge that, as well as all the athletes that did a great job. On the seventh grade boy's side, Steel Me broke two individual records. He broke the mile and the two-mile record, and both, I believe, at the Lake Track Meet. I could be wrong, but I think they were both at the Lake Track Meet. Arthur Hoffine, seventh grade, set a new hundred-meter record. The seventh grade boys' medley relay team of Case Ball, Steel Me, Jake Hardlick, and Arthur Hoffine broke the medley relay record. On the girls' side, Berkeley Mine, eighth grade, she set a new hundred-meter dash record and a new long jump record. And then our eighth grade girls' four-hundred-meter relay team of Adeline Brummer, Adeline Doherty, Hallie Ball, and Berkeley Mine, who broke the four-hundred-meter relay record. So we had a lot of kids really performing well. And that's a credit to our athletes trying really hard and our coaches doing a phenomenal job. So I just wanted to make sure that we get them recognized, because they did a great job.
Thank you.
I'll go next. We talk a lot about our Panther Clubs and Seven Mindsets, Passion First. We've wrapped up, our Drama Club performed twice upon a time. So hopefully, some of you got to go over there to see that. And a shout-out to Middle School for letting us shoot through auditorium. Our other Panther Club, Live to Give mindset, took a group of students up to the Ronald McDonald House. And we've been collecting pop tabs, but they actually took them there, talked to the presenter about where they go, and they got to explore, got to visit and tour two of the Ronald McDonald Houses that were up there. And then, a third Panther Club attended Charlotte's Web at PoliTheater. And shout-out to our students, as we were leaving, several compliments from the staff there about our students at the theater. And then, we have just wrapped up all of our year-end assessments. Yes. But seventy-three percent of our students have made typical or aggressive growth in our CDM Fastbridge assessments. And then eighty percent are at or above benchmark in our A-reading assessment. So that's testament to the hard work that our staff puts in and our students.
Next with Cottonwood, a couple things. Our second grade live-up day will be May 15th, where our kids get to go over to Sunflower to check out the transition for to third grade over there. A big thank you to PTO, Cottonwood Sunflower PTO, for all the nice gifts and activities and treats and things for our staff. Last week, end-of-the-year activities coming up, Field Day, last day of school picnic, looking forward to. And we also wrapped up our assessments for the year. For fast grades, we don't take state assessments, but in our kindergarten went up. Our last three years, we've gone up twenty-three percent, we jumped five percent this year. Up for kids that are benchmarked, first grade had good growth of eighteen percent from a couple years ago. And three years ago, up from, yeah, thirty-two, fifty percent. And then, second grade jumped thirty-five percent up a couple years ago. And then, just in the last nine weeks or so, from March to May, in second grade, we had fifty-one students that needed to be on benchmark. And in the last nine weeks or so, we closed, I got to seventy-seven students. Quite a bit of growth there that last quarter of the year. So very proud of our teachers and students for the growth that they've made this year.
All right, that leaves the high school. We had a whole bunch of really excited young people today because it was seniors' last day of school. So they finished finals and they checked their Chromebooks in this afternoon. And we will see them back on Thursday morning for the graduate walk-through of buildings, which has become a tradition we've done here lately. And we're on our third or fourth year of doing a senior breakfast as well. So that'll be a nice opportunity for our parents to come in and have one last memorable moment with their students. On Friday of this week, Mrs. Calp and I are getting dumped by the student body. We've launched a fundraiser to benefit the graduates from this year's senior class. We've raised quite a bit of money, and I've shared that with my board before. Not excited about getting wet at the end of the day, but it is supposed to be nice. And we're doing it for a really good cause. I wanna give recognition to our FFA program, and we're state champions in our business management again this year. And we've got a really nice tradition going on with that. And we had our recognition rally last week at school on the day that should've been our spring flame. And so, we celebrate a lot of really neat things that happen throughout the course of the spring semester. And at that rally, we hand out the Erlinda Award each year. And our two honorees this year were Brynne Winter and J.J. Crawford. So really nice thing to do with the student body.
Activity-wise, we're getting everything wrapped up. You know, I should say that normally, we would be getting wrapped up towards the end of school. We actually have, and this is the way the calendar falls, we actually have three more weeks of activities. So the seniors that are on whatever sports team they're on, kudos to them because they're gonna have to come in for another three weeks before they actually get to start their summer break. That's just a weird phenomenon, that's how it felt. Track league is coming up this week. We've had Mosaic last week. Tennis, we had two gentlemen qualified here at state tennis. Daniel Braga, who is actually a foreign exchange student for us, and Kayden Powell. And Kayden Powell, this was the first year he ever played tennis. And so, I'm kinda giving him a little bit of elbow, and I'm like, man, thank what you did, now you can play for four years. But congratulations to them, and we'll see how they do. Track-wise, I said we have our league coming up this week. Baseball, we go to Lewisburg tomorrow night, wrap up our regular season, and then we will be hosting. We're either gonna be the two or the three seed, we don't know yet, all depends on how everything shakes out. But we will be hosting a regional on the twentieth, which is next Tuesday. Those games, baseball games will start at 2:00 PM, they'll be up at our field. And I've already talked to Brandon, kinda warned him and the rest of the Cottonwood people, it's gonna be a mess, I mean, it just is, there's no way around it. And so, we're just gonna be able to park wherever we can park to get them in. We'll have four teams coming. Again, we don't know exactly who those will be. We don't know exactly when we will play in those two games, it'll be the first and the third, or second and the third. It all depends on my league. So just a lot going on. Choir, we have choir going, let's see, Monday, so Wednesday night, we have a choir performance over in the middle school, a Blue Jeans concert. And speaking of choir and of band, I know, just put it in the board report, but it was after the last meeting, both choir and band received ones again on their performances for the State Guard troops, yes. So congratulations to them, and those kids really seem to get into league. They're very proud of that. League, oh, league baseball, yes, won league championship. Coach Brummer got his hundredth win the other night. And so, just a lot of things, we go really fast throughout the year, but these last three weeks, it really picks up the pace a lot, so. I mean, we have graduation to throw. the pace a lot, so, I mean, we have graduation.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, and just as far as information and discussion, just a reminder, graduation is this Saturday at ten AM, and so again, board members, if you're not able to be there, make sure you let Matt know so that they can have out the right amount of chairs. And we have some KISA updates from Tammy.
So a PowerPoint for you, I cannot take credit for the PowerPoint. Amy Ride, if you did not know, she is a art major, so she does a very good job of putting stuff together, so I stole it from her. She uses this app in service with the middle school and high school, so it's titled Path of the Panther, connecting the dots to KISA and our school improvement plan. So what is KISA and what is school improvement? We'll talk a little bit about that. KISA, it stands for Kansas Educational Systems of Accreditation. So it just means that we're going to look at what school improvement is, what the teachers are doing, and what we have that will impact students and the results that we're getting. So accreditation has evolved for many years, I mean, if you're a veteran like me or old, we used to have things like, it would measure the number of books in your class, in your library, the number of desks, two things where you would focus strictly on a strategy and talk about that, and then we've really come to where it's really going to focus on some specific areas now, so. So there's three areas of KISA, outcomes, school improvement, which is our action plan, and compliance. So when they met with the middle school and high school, they had them work as a group to come up with what, what three criteria or outcomes would you use to measure success for our students? Because everybody, if you sit down and talk to people, you have different ideas of what I might measure, what you might measure, what an elementary might measure, what a high school might measure, so the state has really drilled that down. So the outcomes, these are student outcomes, so what, what students have been doing, and we measure how they have performed, state assessments will be one, graduation rate is another, and post-secondary success. So state assessments, the ones that they just got finished taking, are new, so the results will not be back until next year, they're going to set and have cut scores done during June. Graduation rate, Amy and I attended a meeting, a KISA update, they, they call this KISA two-point-oh, but it's, it's just KISA, is good. But the graduation rate, they're looking at a specific graduation rate for KISA accreditation purposes, because there's a lot of small schools in Kansas that, if you have a graduating class of twelve or nine, and then you have one student that doesn't graduate, that, that takes your graduation rate down quite a bit. So they're going to look at a different measure for that, and the state board, they're taking that to the state board tomorrow and Wednesday. Post-secondary success is another one that they're going to look at to see if that changes, but basically, we're held accountable to students two years after they graduate. What have they done post-secondary? Have they gone on to college? Have they gotten a certificate for like a career tech ed program? So those are, those are areas that we will be measured on, but post-secondary success, there may be a few tweaks, and we know that graduation rate, there's a possibility of tweaks in that. So what do we do? We, we're, we're told we need to have an action plan. So our action plan that we have is to figure out what are we going to do as a district that we'll put in place that our teachers can do to impact student results. So we put together an action plan, and it focuses on fundamentals, a structure, lead indicators, so. So on the fundamentals, you're, you pick one. Now, the caveat on this is, even though you pick one, you really, you're doing everything, but we're going to pick one to look at, because structured literacy, we do, we do standards alignment, we are doing balanced assessments, and quality instruction, all that happens, but our focus is going to be standards alignment, and then, you do it next one, then we're going to look at professional learning. So what can we do with standards alignment? How can we teach the teachers, the staff, about standards alignment that will impact students' scores on the state assessment, and you want to eventually impact all those other areas also? Because K one, two, you know, they don't always think about graduation rate, you know, you get, that the second grade this year did take the practice assessment for reading, it's the first time they've done that. The scores come back as individual scores, so we don't have like a, a group of scores for the, the district, but it's those things that we need to do to kind of look at what, what's going on. So we'll go, in essence, in six months, in my, my board report, I kind of told you, we have a six-month measure and a year measure. Six months is in October, so we've already started, so you got April, May, June, July, you know, when we're not here, so in October, the first check-in will be there, and the state will have a person that comes here, and they'll talk to us about it and say, what have you done in the six months to meet your plan? And so we're going to develop a professional learning committee that's going to be focused on standards alignment. Now, we really have started some deep dives into standards alignment with the middle and high school, the elementaries have done some of that, but looking at what does it look like consistently, K-12, that we can have a program that everybody understands what it is from the beginning to the end. So that committee, oops, one more about, that committee is going to develop a calendar to be based on this training, so that will happen, and then the collaboration to meet those outcomes will be there. But the, the committee, so we're going to work with a consultant, plus we're going to work with in-house people that, that know what's happening, so then, in, you go next, ta-da, this is when we get accredited. So this year, we've already, we've accomplished that, we submitted our plan, it was approved on the first submission, that's not normal, we have a really good consultant with KSDE that's working with us, she helped us get all the wording down. So next year, all we're going to look at is the action plan and the implementation, and then you have those areas of compliance. The compliance areas range from, you know, do you have the school nutrition and wellness, to do you have IPS in place, things like that. So those, those are things that we do, if we're not in compliance, we know ahead of time, and, and we can address that. But then, year two, we'll have back the scores from the state assessments, whatever they'll be, we'll be able to look at that and then make some changes to address any areas that, that are of concern. Then year three, so in twenty-six, twenty-seven, you become evaluated on every area of that plan. So it'll be very important to see what those state assessments look like, and then we already have some things in place where we do the interims, we've started with the second grade reading test, looking at what can we do to measure those standards to see where we're at, because those interims, the mini tests, those are the only things that measure apple to apple what those state assessments are about, so. Do you have any questions about KISA or what we're doing, or I think the last month I had in there in our action plan, what it was? If you liked the PowerPoint, I think you can hire Amy, I think it's out of Canada. I, that's new to me, so I'm not a, I'm a little PowerPoint person, so anytime I can steal something, that's really good, plus it's consistent with what people are seeing, so.
I thought it was great.
Yes, thank you.
Very informative.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is open forum, and just as a reminder, the form needs to be returned to the clerk or designated ten minutes prior to the start of our meeting. Each person will get five minutes to speak, and patrons are advised that the board members will not entertain questions or discussion and will not take action. According to Kansas law, the board shall not hear personal complaints concerning any employee or groups of employees of the school district or any person connected with the school district during open session, matters relating to the security of the board, the school, the school buildings or facilities of the information system of the school, other topics defined as part of KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen, those listed for closed or restricted session. And we go in the order in which the forms were turned in, so that's how we will proceed. We've got our first one, Jenny Hallmark, and I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name, but come up to the podium, and then as soon as you're ready, you can start, and your timer will be up on the screen. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jenny Hallmark, I am a mom of two boys here in the school district, a big believer in public schools and community and educators coming together, and here tonight to advocate for our queer students. But first, I want to tell you about the experience my boys have had with receiving great support and resources. So my oldest is Nicholas Nelson, he's a junior, and articulated pretty early on that he wanted to graduate early and pursue his career as a diesel mechanic. So met with Dr. Heinz, or Mr. Heinz and their staff, and was met with a lot of support and resources, and was able to complete his junior and senior classes through the Green Bush Mutual Academy and the contracted classes, and is slated to walk the stage on Saturday. So very well-supported kiddo that has a great future ahead of him. My second was identified early on in second grade that he had a reading disability, and a lot of the educators here in this room were wonderful at providing him resources with very specific IEP, SPED classes, and he is in his first year at the middle school and on the honor roll for both semesters. So a real testament to where these kids can go when we come together as a group and provide the support and resources for them for the trajectories that they're on. Tonight, I'm here to advocate for the queer students in our district. I feel like the, the comments that the board made this morning are in a direction that is good, however, I feel like our students have been very clearly advocating and communicating that they need a safe place, a psychologically safe place to know who to go to, to talk to about the real-life events that are going on in real time with them. The need for this support was unmistakably evident at last month's meeting, when a person of the community was allowed to come in here and bully and shame the students in this room. They were accused of having psychological issues, and they were accused of being part of a terrorist organization. And the fact that that was allowed on district ground in an officiated meeting is more than disappointing. I cannot fully describe how disappointed it was that that was allowed to happen in here. And with that, if it is tolerated here, the hate speech that happened in this room last month, how does that translate out to our buildings and our schools and our classrooms, especially when the ratio to adults and kids is much different in the schools? So as a resident, you know, looking back at our mission and vision, it says that all students and every student has, should be supported with the resources and to really thrive, both personally, growth, and academic success. So one of the basic needs of safety is, is safety, it's at the foundation of Maslow's hierarchy to really achieve that self-actualization, and I don't feel like our students got that here last month. So as a mom, as a taxpayer, and as a nurse who has personally cared for queer victims of violence, of self-harm, and suicide attempts, I implore you to grow on that collaboration that has been said to be started with the extracurricular club, and really set up forums to truly listen to these kids and the experiences that they're having, not only in our school district, but in our community. Again, because when the community and the school district and the educators come together, we can really launch these kids on a successful path. This, to me, and I think to the students, is so much more than just a poster, this isn't a political or religious issue, this is really about finding ways to support kids and help them thrive, no matter what trajectory or path that they're on, and I am open to working with any of the students or educators or board members to help make that happen. So thank you for your time and your dedication to the kids.
Okay, our second open forum is Renee Bowman.
Hello, I'm Renee Bowman, I have two kids in the district, but I also teach here. First, I want to say thank you so much for allowing the GSA that you guys just announced, but I'm still going to continue on with my speech because the Safe Stones signs are still not met up. So as a teacher in this district for eighteen years now, I have never spoken to the board about an issue. Honestly, after last month's meeting, when I decided to speak, I have gone back and forth through fear and backlash around my job. However, the safety of my students is much more important to me. I know it is not a requirement of the board to have an education degree, but in college, one of the first things we learn as teachers is Maslow's hierarchy of needs. This explains that basic needs must be met before academic growth can occur. My job as an educator is to ensure that my students' needs are met so that they can learn the curriculum adopted by this board. Maslow's hierarchy of needs states that the first thing that must happen is that a student's physiological needs must be met. Our district does a great job of this. We know that many students get this need met at home, but we know that many of them don't. We offer backpack snacks, free or reduced lunches, SOS before school starts, and teachers who provide students with granola bars and crackers from their personal stash. The next step in Maslow's hierarchy is safety, this includes physical and psychological safety. This is where our district has recently dropped the ball. In fact, worse than that, we have created an unsafe environment for some students, even if that's not what was ever intended. We have allowed our students to speak for four months now with great speeches and research, without even giving them a response until tonight. We have unintentionally created a place where bullies feel that it is now okay to use hate speech and derogatory slurs. According to Google's AI, the concept of Safe Stones in schools generally refers to creating inclusive environments where students, particularly those from marginalized communities, feel safe and supported. This concept has roots in the women's and LGBTQ+ movements of the nineteen-sixties and seventies, evolving to encompass various forms, including physical spaces and policies that protect students from harm and create a sense of belonging. After reading this definition, I have two questions. One, why are we going back to pre-nineteen-sixties and seventies and equal rights? Two, how can anyone disagree that people should have a safe place? Are you saying that they shouldn't feel safe? This should not be a political or a religious discussion, this is a question of simple ethics. All humans created equally and deserve to feel, or are all humans created equally and deserve to feel safe? If you disagree that, with that, then maybe you should say that out loud. I think I'm created better than others because of the way I was born? Sounds ridiculous, doesn't it? As a straight white person, I have grown up in a country with privilege. Does this mean that my life has always been easy, or that I don't have to work hard for every penny? Absolutely not. But it does mean that I don't get to decide what segregation is, and I don't get to decide what other people, what bothers other people. It means that I have to listen to minorities to tell me how it makes them feel, and for the last four months, I have been listening, and it's time to change things for this amazing group of students. Regardless of your personal beliefs, these students have the right to a safe place. For me personally, if a gay person were to ask me to marry them, I would say no, because I'm not gay. However, if a gay student was in my class, and they are, you best believe that I would love them and teach them, I would want them to feel safe and welcome, I would want them to, I would stop anyone from bullying them. Let's go further than that. If a Hispanic child was in my class, and they are, you best believe I would love them and teach them, I would want them to feel welcome, I would stop anyone from bullying them. Even further, if your son or daughter is in my class, and they are, no matter anything else, you best believe that I would love them and teach them, I would want them to feel safe and welcome, I would stop anyone from bullying them. In Mark twelve thirty-one, the Bible commands us to love our neighbors or selves, in Luke six thirty-one, we are told that to treat others the way we want to be treated. Why aren't we following this? Our district has followed the Jason Flood Act required by the state since two thousand sixteen. On their website, I found the following statistics. LGBTQ+ youth are not at an increased risk of suicide because of their sexual orientation or their gender identity. Instead, they are at an increased risk of suicide due to the societal mistreatment and stigma that they experience. In the past year, thirty-nine percent of LGBTQ+ youth seriously In the past year, 39% of LGBTQ plus youth seriously considered suicide and 12% attempted. These numbers show exactly why we need safe places. Last month, I observed another horrible example of why we need safe zones for these students. A grown white man said multiple derogatory and inappropriate comments and bullied these kids in front of us on video. You know that this is exactly what is happening in our hallways too. This weekend, I witnessed a family member of some board members comment on social media that the board wants to cut funding and taxes, but they are too busy working on quote, "other crap like signs and people's feelings." This is not okay. Our students need to feel safe. The majority of them already do, but we need to make sure that they all do. Please, I'm begging you, just to give these amazing humans the decency to at least discuss options for them to be safe spaces.
Okay, Amber Sack.
Okay, I'll be the first to say I'm not a great public speaker. My name is Amber Sack and today I'm speaking on a topic that is both deeply personal and undeniably important. It's the safe zone signs that have been removed from the classroom. I am the proud sister of an incredibly gay man who was kind, creative and fiercely loved, but also spent majority of his life battling depression. As a teenager, he also faced multiple suicide attempts trying to survive in a world that didn't always make space for him. While our society has made progress, the fact that we are still debating signs in inclusion and the signs of inclusion at school during board meetings shows just how far we still have to come. The last meeting is proof of this. One year ago this month, I unexpectedly lost my brother. And I stand here today to honor him by speaking up for something he believed in, which is the right to feel safe, supported and seen, especially in our schools. I'll be honest, I hesitated to speak tonight, not just because public speaking is of my strength, but because I care deeply about many of you on the board. You, and it's not easy to live in a small community and to rock the boat. But then I thought about the courage that I have witnessed from students and young people who have stood up and spoken out. And I have decided to use their willingness to be vulnerable and as a reminder that being uncomfortable is not the enemy, but complacency is. Their voices should not just be heard, but should be celebrated and served as an opportunity to challenge all of us, to be better, to do better and to love harder. I appreciate the gay and straight Alliance Club, but this does not address the kids that are in immediate crisis. Many of you know that I have had the privilege of serving on the schools, as a school social worker at Cottonwood for nearly 20 years. And in that time, I had the honor of working alongside, alongside some of the most dedicated staff and educators that I have ever known. Since then, I have continued my journey in mental health care where I support children and families coming into the emergency room during moments of crisis as they navigate some of the most challenging moments of their lives. I now work as an acute mental health provider in the ER at Children's Mercy. Beyond my professional roles, my most important role is to my family. I am a proud mother, stepmother and adoptive mother to five incredible kids, all who have walked the halls of the Paola schools. Two of them are still there currently, today, finishing out their high school years. I have listened closely to the reasoning behind removing the safe zone signs. And I have tried to understand and make sense of it, but I can't wrap my brain around it. Let me be clear, safe zone signs are not political, they are not religious, they are not encouraging students to become LGBTQ, and they are not a distraction and they do not create division. What they are is visible. They are symbols of support. They let students know that they, that there are adults in the building who have taken the time to educate themselves about LGBTQ issues and who are committed to being safe, trustworthy allies. This is not about exclusion or division, it is about empowerment. Not everyone has a training or knowledge or confidence to handle deeply sensitive conversations, but some do. And a sign serve as beacons for students who are struggling in crisis or simply need to be seen. As I shared earlier, I now work as a clinically licensed acute mental health provider for the ER at Children's Mercy. I have seen firsthand what it looks like when kids are in deep emotional pain. Just last month, 365 children came through the emergency room in mental health crisis. Of those, 211 were there due to direct suicide thoughts or suicide attempts. That is just in one month, in one hospital. Paola is not immune to this. You have already heard multiple times in national data related to depression and suicidal teens. I will reiterate, according to the Trevor Project, 37% of LGBTQ youth have seriously considered suicide and 19% have actually attempted. LGBTQ youth are two and a half times more likely to suffer from depression or anxiety than their heterosexual peers. And this depression, it's not because of who they are, it's because of how the world treats them. It's because of bullying and rejection, which again, many of us witnessed at the last board meeting. Whole other page, I'm not gonna make it through. Creating safe zones isn't just about physical protection, it's about emotional survival and sending the message that you matter, you are not alone and you belong. I could go through the whole psychology 101 Maslow's hierarchy of needs, but others have done that and you guys know it. If we want students to grow and learn and to thrive, they have to know and feel that way at school. Let's be honest, in all of the years of the safe zone signs were displayed, we did not have one single person come forward saying that they were harmed by them. And why is that? It's because they weren't harmed by them. Let's put the signs back up.
Okay, Valerie Taylor.
On February 8th, 2024, Nexx Benedict committed suicide after being beaten to a state of unconsciousness by two classmates in the bathroom at Oasis High School in Oklahoma. Nexx was a target of severe harassment and bullying in school for years before they took their own life. During the time of this harassment, the superintendent of Oklahoma's Department of Education refused to approve any form of safe zone or representation in schools for students of the high school, for students in the LGBTQ community. He claimed that these students were a threat to the school. The department refused to grant LGBTQ students the safety that they need and now a 16-year-old kid is dead. A 16-year-old kid is dead. Nexx loves nature, the walking dead, Minecraft and their cat who they named Zeus, a cat who was never going to feel the love of their owner again. This could have been avoided and it should have been avoided. Maybe if Nexx came to school one day and saw a sign that told him that he was seen and that he was safe. Regardless of the bullying, if they saw a sign, maybe they could still be here today. So why are these signs no longer allowed in our classrooms? On April 10th of this year, a bill that predicted gay and trans youth in the foster care system was vetoed. In the state of Kansas, adoption agencies can no longer deny adoption from parents who openly reject a child's sexual orientation, gender or general beliefs. This means a technicality that it is entirely legal for parents to adopt a gay or trans child with the sole intention of sending them to conversion therapy, which is a legal practice in Kansas. There are approximately 6,000 kids in the Kansas foster system as of now. On top of this, around 30% of foster kids identify with the LGBTQ community in somewhere. This means that approximately 1,800 foster kids are now at risk of being sent to unsafe or abusive households. That is three times the amount of students enrolled in Paola High School alone. I'm asking you to please think about those numbers and take a moment to consider how many of your Paola students are struggling with similar situations. And I will ask you again, why are these signs, which assure these children that someone is there for you, such a violation? Four out of 10 homosexual or transgender teens in Kansas and Missouri have reported genuinely considering suicide. And 15% of these children have made that attempt. This was found in a survey sent out by the Trevor Project. Statistics show that suicide rates within the Midwest are substantially higher than those in other areas of the United States. The western states also have a much higher number of reports from LGBTQ youth receiving threats of physical harm due to their sexuality or gender identity. So remind me one more time, why these signs are so important, uninformed? Is it because we're only here to learn or is it because they're distracting? Well, what about the kids in class behind me who are talking over that entire lesson? Surely you can't ban them from the classrooms. What about the boys who are throwing slurs in their conversations in the back of the class? I'm sorry if I seem distracted, but the group of girls won't stop laughing at me after they asked me if I would actually date another girl. I'm sorry if I seem distracted, but the boys behind me keep making jokes about burning all the gay people and I can't tell whether the teacher may or may not agree with them. If only I had some kind of a sign to show me that I'm safe here in this classroom. I'm sorry if you were distracted by this sign or if you even noticed it here. With this sign up, I know that I'm safe to report any harassment or bullying without my teacher secretly taking the harasser's side because they also disagree with my sexuality. With these signs up, there's absolutely no question that I am safe.
Grace Wallena.
I'm sorry, pardon and you're a simmer. Hello, my name is Grace Wallena. I am a PhD graduate, an educator and an older sister to two current students in the district. I've worked with kids for seven years with a focus on social emotional development. And the main focus of my training was, students cannot succeed if they do not feel safe. Everyone has a safe space, for some it's their bedroom or a quiet spot at work. Safety is essential like food. That's why we have free lunch programs, because safety is a basic human right, not a privilege. USD 368 has repeatedly failed to provide that safety. Students have stood before you respectfully asking to be heard. And time and time again, they've been dismissed by the very adults entrusted with their care. That is unacceptable. I was one of those students. I was bullied for my weight, my last name, my physical and mental health. I was sexually harassed, physically assaulted and targeted with hate speech. Because of this, I attempted to take my own life more than once. And yet I am standing here today because of a few remarkable staff members. Mr. Powell, Ms. Vale, Ms. Grimes and Karen Newlansky, to name a few. They were my safe people, my safe space. They are proof that safe zones save lives. Without them, I would not be here today. But no student should have to rely on the luck of finding a handful of caring adults. It is your job to make sure every student feels safe. When I brought student-led data and ideas to the principal, I was ignored. When students and staff died by suicide, there was silence. And now, students asking for safety signs are met with resistance because some are more concerned with image than impact. Let's be honest. If your issue with the safety sign is the fact that it includes the rainbow, then change the design. However, that is not the true problem. This is not about the signs, but what they represent. And what they represent is the truth. Paola schools are not a safe space for all kids. And instead of addressing this reality, this board is choosing to silence it. I want you to understand something. Removing these signs will not remove the problem. Denial will not erase discrimination. Ignoring the voices of these brave students will not make their pain disappear. You are sending the clear message that you believe they do not matter and that they do not deserve to feel safe. You have the power to show these kids that being a decent human being who cares about others is more important than protecting the reputation of a school or pleasing a small circle of influential families. Starting this work now sets a tone for the rest of their lives. If they learn to speak up now, they'll carry that courage into adulthood. If they feel supported now, they'll grow into confident people who know they are worthy of love, safety and respect, no matter who they are. History tells us that oppressors often rise to positions of power. So I ask you, what side of history do you want to be on? Will you continue to protect your image or will you protect your students? Stop neglecting, start listening, start protecting, start caring. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Elena Super.
My name is Elena Super and I'm a concerned taxpayer resident of Paola. When I learned that the safe zone signs had been removed, I wondered what deliberation had taken place before the decision was made to remove the signs. Was there a particular grievance that had been expressed or was it spurred by a personal preference or religious belief? As elected board members, your primary role is to lead, serve and advocate for students, staff and community members in pursuit of policies that guide the district in a positive direction. To paraphrase the Code of Ethics that each board member pledges to uphold, decisions should only be made after full discussions are held at public meetings, that all decisions made should be based on the available facts and independent judgment and not influenced by individuals or special interest groups, and that board members should avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using your board position for personal or partisan gain. It is my understanding that the signs have been on for several years. Public discussions were not held regarding their removal and no explanation until this evening was provided to the parents or students. Since January, I listened to testimony from children of the district that have come forward to share how the signs provided them with a sense of security and express their very personal concerns and experiences. Testimony provided by the very students that you were elected to serve has shed light on the fact that the removal of the signs has brought about a cultural change to their learning environment. Yet the board, after hearing testimony for several months, did not acknowledge or attempt to rectify the issue until recently. And the reinstatement of the LGBTQ group is a good start, but it's not enough. Safe zone signs, like other signs, displayed since the late 60s, I'm a bit older than the majority of everyone here, like the Blockmutter sign or the McGruff crime dog sign, they didn't indicate that the surrounding neighborhoods were unsafe. They simply indicated a guaranteed place of refuge. The signs were not political, nor did they express a personal statement. The intent of the safe zone sign display of the signage goes beyond sexuality and inclusion. It serves as a reminder that there is a place where someone is willing to help and listen to anyone that may be in crisis, whether it be from bullying, abuse, mental health or family issues. And in doing so, may ultimately have the potential to prevent suicide, something that our community has unfortunately experienced over the years. A collaborative measure that would allow the students to regain a level of emotional security would be to place the safe zone signs outside of the offices of school counselors as their duties include providing personal support in addition to curriculum guidance. In doing so, students will know that there is a place and a person that they can go to when necessary. In addition, it would be ideal to extend this to any teacher who supports the endeavor. An alternative suggestion to the safe zone sign, if in fact the issue is with the design of the sign, would be to become, to come up with a universal sign of refuge, such as a singular ear that would symbolize someone who is willing to attentively and empathetically listen to any person's thoughts, feelings or concerns and provide necessary help when needed. As our elected board members, I hope that you will heed the concerns of the students and the community once and for all and demonstrate collaborative efforts to restore our students' sense of security that was inadvertently and unintentionally damaged by the removal of the safe zone signs. Thank you for your time.
Hey, James Low.
Hi. Good evening, USD 368 school board members and Paola community. I'm James Low. I'm a concerned parent frustrated by the ongoing challenges with our children's safety, especially during things like Inclamandmother. Students living 1 to 2.5 miles from school like my own Students living 1 to 2.5 miles from school, like my own, must walk streets like Baptiste Drive, which may have sidewalks, but it doesn't have any kind of a crossing guard over there right where it's by the middle school. In ice snow or storms, they're at serious risk. We've got cars going down that street 35, 40 miles an hour. We've got semi traffic, dump trucks, all that stuff. The paid ridership program, which was a valiant effort, costing $175 to $275 for one semester, isn't an option for many families, including my own, especially when the weather turns hazardous. I know you care about our kids, but we need urgent action to keep them safe in bad weather. I'm focused on an immediate inclement weather route for all students in the 1 to 2.5 mile radius, and that's walking distance, not as the crow flies, during hazardous conditions. After speaking with Alatha Ford, specifically the owner, we can lease seven passenger minivans for nine months at $4,000 each, with maintenance covered by Alatha Ford because it's a lease. Within the $70,000 to $105,000 budget that I've come up with, based on the Contingency Reserve Fund, which is at 1.1 million dollars in the fiscal year 25 budget review, we could lease 17 to 26 vans accommodating 119 to 182 students, which, under Kansas law, KSA 72-5143, reallocating general funds resources for emergencies like this, as amended in Senate Bill 165. This solution avoids the needs for bus drivers, as staff or volunteers can drive minivans, or even, you know, a parent who's a stay-at-home parent, or, you know, something along those lines. This would ensure safety and attendance for at-risk students, those eligible for free meals or at risk of dropping out, or, you know, families who may face a significant barrier due to an ice storm or an unforeseen, you know, thunderstorm, you know, mom's working late, can't go get her son and take him home from school, and he's got to walk home and hail that's this big around. The inclement weather route is just the start, though. Imagine our children struggling through all of this stuff, taking small steps towards their education, and each step is threatened by the fact that we don't have proper transportation, or, you know, we're a rural town and don't have, you know, all the necessary resources, sites, and things like that. Think of the parents watching helplessly as forecast version. This is about keeping them safe now. I want to work with you to change the legislation that governs these safety gaps, ensuring no child faces such risks again. Please reach out to me at safeschooltransport2025@gmail.com to collaborate. Our kids are counting on your leadership. Let's build a safer future together.
Emma Livengood.
All right, hello. I want to start by introducing myself to some of you who might not know me. I know a lot of people in here do. My name is Emma Livengood, and I attended the USD 368 School District from kindergarten through my graduation in 2021. Unfortunately, what I've seen from the administration of this district during my time there and since can only be described as disappointing. The message that has been ingrained by the administration is that of normal, and if you are anything outside of their scope of normal, you don't matter as much. While that might not be what message is intended, it comes across very clearly when you disallow any person from feeling welcome. As a member of the LGBTQ community, I know the grievances the current students are so eloquently bringing to your attention. I was met with the same homophobic slurs during my time at Paola High School, so much so that I graduated a year early to get out of that environment. As a working paralegal, I can very confidently say that the hate speech feud within the walls of that school is not tolerated in the real world, despite what some very ignorant people have said, specifically in the past, in the last board meeting. There are repercussions, such as students losing their scholarships, admissions to university, and employees losing their jobs. The normalization of that type of bigotry is so unbelievably closed-minded and outdated. Worse, it cultivates hate. You are not preparing those students for what faces them outside of that school. You are teaching those outside of your norm that they should feel unsafe, unheard, and alone, and you are teaching those who throw that type of rhetoric around that they get to bully their way through life. I was very lucky to have two incredibly supportive parents from the very beginning. Without their support, I would not have made it through that high school, let alone now being married to my amazing spouse. Many kids aren't that lucky. While I'm sure you did not choose to disallow the Safe Zone signs because you wanted media attention, you got it. Students should not have to spend their time fighting for safety. They should be learning. Instead, they are learning that in order to be heard, they have to fight tooth and nail for an outdated administration to finally catch up and understand that it is 2025 and this is the world we live in. LGBTQ students do exist, and the threat to their safety well in this district, especially without those signs, is very real. There are a handful of teachers who are very supportive, but they're left at a standstill when this board makes poor decisions like removing those signs. I want to make this very clear. Removing the Safe Zone signs is not only a terrible decision, it will unequivocally lead to more harm for LGBTQ students. The vast majority of students affected by this are likely unknown to you because you have made your position clear. You don't care about the damage. While I agree with everybody else, the GSA is a great start, but it does not fix the problem. It's unfortunately very predictable for this district to minimize the real problems, as they've done consistently in the past, as people have mentioned, with suicide, with previous concerns about this. It's been four months of your students begging for you guys to listen. As school administrators, especially those making decisions, it is extremely important for you to put your personal beliefs aside and choose what is best for the entire student body, not just those who fit your mold. Allowing a sign that has absolutely no language specifically catered towards LGBTQ to be posted, letting every student know that every student is welcome, cannot do any harm. LGBTQ students are not asking for special treatment. They are not asking for you to take anything away from anybody else. They are asking to be safe. It is time for you to do better. As a family member has mentioned, that you guys want to get back to business as usual, protect your students, and that will go.
Angelina Blank.
Good evening, everybody. For those who don't know me, I assume many of you do, I'm Angelina Blank. I'm a senior, although I just finished my last day, so I have graduation and then I'm out. I've spent time from kindergarten all the way up to graduating at Paola. If I myself have had a personally lovely time for the fortune of who I am, what I enjoy to do, and how I interact with people, and specifically with this speech, I wanted to just talk with you guys and have that open communication, not spewing facts or research at you, because sometimes people would rather have that kind of conversation. I personally started to help my fellow students and those who I knew struggled with this sort of topic in January, because I have always had the feeling and hope of helping others from this community. This community has taught me surrounding and supporting those around me is what I'm supposed to do. I also hold the fact that it doesn't matter who they are or who they believe they should be, and I believe everyone should be able to be supported. I started this for that reason. I continue now for the fact that it's gone on five months, and I've seen the toll that it's taken on every single one of these people who I love, and they have supported me my last year, and I just wish I could support them for their next few years, but I cannot anymore in the school. I can only support from the outside. And I know that the personal inside issues increase every day, especially with us putting ourselves out here in this situation, which we all accept and understand, but we hope that as the people of the board who have hopefully the best interests of every student and every school in their hearts, and I believe you do, I believe you are all good people who are on here for a reason, and I just hope that you guys can come to see and understand our side in that we don't want anyone to feel unsafe. I've had many conversations with many people, with many views, and I found it funny for the fact that we all seem to have the same want. We all want the kids to feel safe. We all see different approaches to that safeness, but we still all believe in that one goal. And that's all we all care about, but we all can't get past our own sides, no matter which side we're on. We all have opinions, and we stand strong in those. But I think that if we all kind of take a moment to evaluate everything that we have said and everything that you guys have said, and we appreciate what you've said at the beginning of this meeting, because it shows that we've had some sort of breakthrough of some sort to have some understanding, and we just hope that we can continue to work with you guys and have some sort of understanding to support everyone. And I just hope that I can continue to come and support my friends and the fact that they have been brave to come up here, and they will continue to be brave and come up here until some sort of action is made, because it's also been five months, and nobody has made any progress of anything on either side, and holding still in water won't save anybody, because, as we all know, still water is not a good thing to stand in. But thank you so much.
Okay, and, excuse me, Whitney, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name.
It's Frizell.
Okay, sorry about that. Whitney Frizell, come on up, please.
Okay, good evening, members of the board. My name is Whitney Frizell. I have a son who is in eighth grade, about to be a freshman. So this topic is going to be more for the people with the littler kids, but I wanted to share my experience. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to address the growing safety concern in our district regarding our children getting to school. Right now, many neighborhoods, including those without sidewalks, adequate street lighting, fall just outside the zone for free busing. This might look reasonable on paper, but in reality, it places students in unsafe conditions, especially during the fall and early spring months, when it's still dark during morning moods. Even where sidewalks do exist, they are often poorly maintained. Many are cracked, overgrown, or so uneven that they pose a tripping hazard, especially when visibility is low. In winter, clouds frequently block these sidewalks with snow piles, specifically at driveways and business entrances, forcing kids to either trudge through muddy yards or step into busy streets. And let's be honest, most of those kids will choose to step out into the street rather than get wet or dirty, and that's a risk. We shouldn't be asking them to take just idiots. In my own family, my son has had to ride his bike to school along Baptiste, which is one of the busiest streets in town, due to sidewalks being completely blocked with snow, leaving him no other option. And for the visual, when you are pulling like into where Rockers Pharmacy is, there's snow banks blocked completely on the sidewalks, so he has to like go completely around those. And by the time the kids go back to school, it's usually mud puddles, so they choose the street. On top of that, he's had four different tire tubes copped, due to blast broken near Shin's buffet, which is there all the time. I walk my dog there frequently. There's always blast. And the others because of the dangerously gray sections of the sidewalk that make it nearly impossible to stay safely on the path. It became such a hassle to push his bike home each time he got a flat tire that he no longer even has a bike to ride. It's not just frustrating, it's unsafe. I also have another son who attends school in Alatha School District, and so I have to drive him two to three days a week per parenting agreement, so I'm unable to drive his name to school myself. As a working parent, I was forced into the impossible position of having to choose between showing up late to work and being reprimanded, or taking my son to school so he doesn't have to walk 45 minutes in the freezing cold, pouring rain, or even 100-degree heat. None of those are safe conditions, and no parent should have to pick between job security and their child's safety. I at least have the advantage of having an older child now, who can make the trek to school when absolutely necessary and will be driving soon. But other families in this neighborhood have younger children who don't have that option. Expecting a kindergartner or a first grader to make that walk in extreme weather or poor conditions is simply not reasonable or safe. One particular area of concern is the Country Club neighborhood. While it technically falls within walking distance, the route is about 40 to 45 minutes long. I've walked it myself. When students walk in the street, when the students walk in the street or use sidewalks outside the neighborhood, that's about how long that takes. Because of the distance and lack of direct access, many students are cutting through wooded areas behind homes or even behind Shin's buffet to shorten the walk. This route is incredibly dangerous because it takes them across active road dirt tracks. I don't think any of us want to wait until a tragedy occurs to acknowledge that this is not an acceptable risk. What's especially frustrating is just a few years ago, we used to see a yellow school bus picking up kids in the Country Club neighborhood, but then the following year, there was a white bus charging $6 per ride, and that's unreasonable cost for families, and it wasn't even provided by the school district. Many of us are working parents, doing our best to maintain full-time jobs while juggling the safety concerns. The burden of coordinating daily transportation adds significant stress to many families. We do appreciate the pay-to-ride option, even though it's very limited, and we recognize the effort it takes to provide it. However, there needs to be more thoughtful consideration about who is asked to pay and why. Location and safety should be top priorities, not just arbitrary distance. Families living in high-risk areas with unsafe walking conditions should not be penalized simply because they fall outside the set radius on a map. I myself had to ask a family member for money just so I could cover the fee and keep my son safe. As a working parent trying to hold down a house in the current economy, I simply couldn't afford the extra cost that I am. And I know I'm not the only one. Many of us are doing everything we can to make things work, things work, but it becomes incredibly disheartening when it feels like basic safety for our children depend on what we can afford and who can ask for help. At the very least, we urge the board to evaluate these high-risk neighborhoods and reconsider how boundaries are drawn. Our goal should be more than just efficiency, it should be safety and equity for every student regardless of where they live. You represent the voices of families in this district. Funding comes directly from the taxpayers, people like us, who are untrusting with the well-being of our children. We're not just asking for convenience, we're asking for safety support and fair consideration.
Scott Chappell.
Hello, everyone. My name is Scott Chappell, and I'm a local gay. I live at the East Cass Cass camp. I went to Paola, I went to Hillsdale Elementary, Paola Middle School, and Paola High School. I want to say that, having been in the Paola schools, and I know it was a long time ago, I was bullied a lot. The other kids knew I was gay before I knew I was gay, and I was called the F-word probably weekly, maybe daily. I know, I hope it's not the same as it was back then, but I have a feeling it probably is. And I think by taking down the Safe Zone signs, you guys have made a statement, unintentionally most likely, but you've made a statement that you actually cite against the gays. And I really want you to rethink that. I actually also want to kind of give you a little history lesson, too, because I happen to be, when I went to Emporia State University, I was on the Safe Zone. We put these signs up all over the school, did it in 1992. We chose, at the time, the rainbow flag was still very new, and we chose the pink triangle because historically it was used in Nazi Germany, gay people were rounded up and killed, and they would use an inverted pink triangle instead of the star, David. And so we used that, we turned it upside, the other way around, make it more positive. Obviously, I'm not very good at public speaking, I'm a little bit worked up, but I just want you guys to think about it. There's a lot of history in this. It's not easy being gay in today's society. It wasn't easy to be gay in the 80s. But we're here, and we're not political footballs. We are actually just people. And I'm not going to use all my time, and I want to thank you.
Okay, next up, we have action items. Yep, I need to approve the handbooks, Paola High School, Middle School, Sunflower, Cottonwood, Virtual, Employee, District, and Substitute, and Justin is going to talk to us about that.
Yes, and so in my board report, I shared changes, and then we also have a copy of this handbook. And so, open answering to questions about the changes. The big one is the employee handbook, that's where most of the changes occur. A big push this year was to take these separate leave categories and consolidate them down into one leave category, and that's really for ease of use for employees and for staff in trying to find policy when we deal with leave policy. Were there any questions that we could answer on the changes in employee handbook? The Substitute handbook, really the only change was is putting language in that matched practice. practice on, uh, when we have non-working substitutes, at what point we take someone off of being an active substitute. Uh, and, and most of the changes you'll probably see are that, putting policy into writing. Um, that way, as staff turn over in the business office, um, as we quote, uh, handbook policy to employees, help explain decisions, that we have something to point to and say, yes, this is here, it's in writing, and this, this is what we're going to follow for consistency sake.
One thing with the employee handbook, um, what you have in front of you is keeping the leave, um, the same. I know one of the things that was negotiated during, um, negotiations was, was leave time from sick and personal to being paid time off and so forth. So that's, it's something as a board, you will, you will take action on later tonight. Um, one of the, the conversations, is a bigger conversation regarding leave time. If the board does ratify the, the vote to support the, the negotiated agreement as presented, then the board will need to determine, and I would recommend that that, for during the June meeting, have a discussion on, um, is that change just for teachers, which is, um, which is what's been negotiated? Is that something that they want to look at for other classifications of employees? That's not a, you know, a pro or a con, that's just something. So, so I bring that up. If, if that was, if there was a change that would need to occur, then what I would recommend is approve of the employee handbook as presented tonight. If there was a need to make an adjustment, just based off that, off of a, a future conversation, then we can, we can make that adjustment just for that part. But that would allow us, um, to, to move forward with some of this, some of the other changes. And then the, the student handbooks for each of the building, um, really, for the most part, it's, I mean, it's, um, it's just updating, you know, some names, um, and then some dates and so forth. But, but you would have had what those changes were. So if there's, there's questions, I mean, we obviously have the administrators here and, and Justin, I can answer questions.
Would it be beneficial to hold off on the employee handbook until we ratify whatever we do in the executive session and then make that?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't think so because, because if we need to adjust something, then we, we will need to, I mean, we can adjust that at a later time. So, I mean, we actually had that discussion, we felt comfortable with, with doing it right now, but, um, and, and if we need to make an adjustment later, then we can, we can definitely do that.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the handbooks, except the high school and the middle school and the employee handbook. And hold those for another month, for next month. I guess, I don't know if I need to specify that or not.
Is there a reason, is there?
I, I'd like to maybe see whether there's a way we can work with administration or something at the high school and middle school handbooks to maybe say, change some of the bullying or harassment policies or something that are in those handbooks to maybe help with some of the, some of the safety issues we've been dealing with for months, plus maybe have, I don't know, a little more black and white with behavioral issues and stuff to where maybe we can protect kids a little bit better. I don't know whether that's an option or not.
So your motion is to?
I would approve Sunflower, Cottonwood, Virtual, District, and Substitute. And hold the other three to have discussions about next month. Or have discussions for, about between now and then, or whatever, I don't know, to where maybe some changes can be made to them by next month.
The three being PHS, PMS, and what was the other?
And the employee handbook, just because we haven't, I, I just think we ought to vote for whatever we're changing in it and then change, make those changes in it. If I'm pulling two out, I would.
I mean, I agree with the bullying, um, the behavioral, I mean, it'd be interesting to see, because, I mean, you're bound, e- every situation's going to be different, but I do think that we could change some verbiage and, um, maybe come up with something else. Not something else, something to add to.
Can you, um, point me or us to specifically, um, the area of the handbook? I mean, is there something specific, or something's worded, or?
I, I guess, it, my feeling is, I don't know, I don't know what I read, and this is off of reading all of them. I mean, I would, some of the PHS stuff has specific, um, look, it's a lot more specific than the middle school one as far as, um, behavioral issues or bullying issues and that kind of stuff, and what punishments should be and what, and if there's a way that we can.
I did read the high school one as much. I dove more into the middle school, I think, because that's where I kind of got stuff. But I'm assuming they somewhat line up. Um, one thing that I noticed with behavioral versus bullying is that the behavioral, so the reasons for being suspended or expelled were, um, a lot stricter than the bullying, harassment policies. I don't know, I, I kind of feel like too, if there's physical aggression, that, I mean, what is, what is the policy on as far as getting like law enforcement involved? Like, is there a, how do we determine whether they get involved or not?
It's, it's very, it seemed to me to be very gray, and I think I would, I would like to see it be a little more black and white.
That's what I was just wondering, as far as police, like, is there, it's not in, I didn't find it in the handbook.
So, so if there's a, um, a physical altercation that would warrant a misdemeanor or felony, then, then we're supposed to notify the police now when we have a school resource officer? That is usually notifying that school resource officer. Um, you know, the, the, the hard part is, is to, to say, if this, then this, is because every situation is different. So that's, that's the hard part to write in words because, and, and not only to, to get it to where, you, you, you do it to try to, um, to help, to be specific to help, but then, what are the unintended, are there unintended consequences based off how something is, is worded and worked through? So that would be the, that would be the piece to it.
And I guess that's, that's why I can't really just say, I, I want it to sound like this, because I don't know exactly what it should, you know, exactly how it should read, but I feel like it could be a lot more black and white to maybe be able to protect the students a little bit better and help.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying too, but, I mean, under, so under like behavioral for the middle school, there's a whole list of things that you could do that could, because for suspension or expelled. And like use of profanity is one of those. So, I mean, how many students could you go expel, based off of use of profan, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, it, it, this, the behavioral issues is a lot tighter than the bullying harassment policy is.
So, so I don't know that they are, um, by themselves. For instance, if you have, if you have a bullying or harassment situation, that includes some of the behaviors listed above, then I think that it's not like an either or type thing they work in, in conjunction to.
I, I don't, I guess I don't understand what you're, what you mean by that. I think you're saying like they could cross over, like, right, the consequence for.
If somebody is bullying, and that because, at which, if somebody's bullying and it's physical or it's biting, or if it's a use of profanity, or, then, then it would be, that is a behavior as part of the other. So, so it's not like, we, if it's a behavior, we only do this, and if it's vulnerable, we classify this as bullying or harassment, we only do this. So, so they, they do, they are intertwined or do crossover.
I guess I kind of find where there could be some gray area in implementing disciplinary action, um, when it's subjective, when the situation, you know, because each situation is different, um, it's up to whomever is, you know, in charge of implementing the disciplinary action. You know, we all know that the same offense is probably not going to get handled, the exact same every time. Um, so I think maybe having one, one bullying harassment, like tightening it up, but applying it to every building, because it, it, I mean, it happens in every building. Um, and reading through each of them, they're all similar, sort of cut from the same cloth, but they're not all saying the same thing, from top to bottom. And I think it, I mean, I think it could be something that could be tweaked, buttoned up a little bit, you know, so that there is some clear direction for, you know, for admin to follow. Now, there's, you know, if those things are happening, they have to be reported. And every classroom teacher takes that oath, we'll call it, to protect every student. I'm not naive to think that that's not happening, but I myself know that it didn't matter who walked in my classroom, I was willing to do whatever it took for them. And so, this, they're right, bullying's happening every single day. And I, that's what needs to be addressed. I just feel like the bullying, the part that's specific to bullying is kind of loosey-goosey, whereas, you know, behavioral is more, these are the behavioral things. And like you said, they can intertwine and these issues can be part of, you know, uses bullying. Um, but the, I mean, this just says, students may be suspended or expelled for any of the following reasons, and use your list. Whereas bullying harassment, the first is a warning, the second is after-school suspension, or, no, I'm sorry, yeah, after-school detention. And this is just middle school, I don't know what, I don't remember high school.
Well, I think, I think high school, it stipulate, and I, and I've, if I remember right, I think it stipulated that fighting was separate from some of the harassment or bullying issues, like fighting had a one, two, you lay hands on another kid or shoved another kid. There was a lot stiffer penalties for that versus bullying and harassment had their own set of three, or you kind, you started off with a warning and then detention, and then this, and then this. And, um, and it seemed like, in the middle school, it seemed like there was ten or twelve different things, harassment, bullying, whatever, or fighting, or anything that could be, and the first one could be a warning, the second one could be detention, or what, whatever, all those different things, which nobody doesn't spell out. Where I, I liked the high school's version a little bit better, where it kind of stipulated that, hey, if you're caught putting your hands on a kid, it's this, and then this, and then this. Um, and it was just a little more specific. And maybe, maybe if there's a little bit more teeth, I guess, with the handbook, maybe there's less, maybe there is, and so be less bullying and less harassment and less of those issues in our district, which, awful.
This one lines out four steps, and the last one is out-of-school suspension. And I just feel like, I feel like, especially as a parent, by the fourth time that my kid is bullied by the same kid doing the same thing, like, it's, I mean, it's just too much, fourth time is too much. And that's not even, I mean, that's just out-of-school suspension. So, I mean, where does it end?
I don't know if this helps or not, but remember, you have separate policy in, in board that policy. Section J will have a section policy, JDBC, which covers bullying. And then in the other section, you'll find USD three sixty-eight bullying plan. And so those two pieces are already in board policy. They're probably not going to be as specific as what Sean is discussing, but, um, you have those to look at also. So JDBC is the kind of the standard board plate bullying policy, and then the actual district policy, um, is the USD three sixty-eight bullying policy is found in section O, the other section.
You know, I mean, we're happy to, to make any adjustments that the, the board wishes to, you know, for us to make, that's, I mean, that's not, that's not, that's not a problem.
And if it's up for us to submit, I, I mean, be a little more specific, I understand that, I just, I mean.
Sure, and, and I will say, none of us want, I mean, I don't want it to be, to make it sound like that we, we just ignore it, I mean, we, we try to deal with it. So I will tell you that dealing with certain situations is the hardest thing to do, because how I can handle it with one person, you can't handle, and I'm speaking from experience. Um, and, and so often, you know, people, people will make it, will say, well, I haven't seen anything, you haven't done anything. Well, because if I make it, like, and I'm just speaking, if I make it blatant or I make it obvious, then I'm going to make it, I don't want to make a situation worse. And so every situation is different, I'm not trying to downplay it one bit, not at all, not at all. Um, and that's why there is the, the, you know, if it's, it's a serious offense, it may warrant, you know, harsher consequences and so forth, and if, if it is, and it does happen, um, and so forth. So, um, so, so, I mean, I'm happy to, to, um, to, to work with administration to try to come up with, with, with something, the, the elementary handbooks are usually almost exactly the same regarding, um, the middle school and high school. I mean, if, if you like one over the other, we can, we can use that as a basis or to start with. Um, and so that's, that's not, that's not an issue. I just want to make sure that I, um, I want to be smart in, in trying to, to do it, and I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to hunt goats, if that makes sense, I'll be not derogatory, I'm just trying to figure out, give a, give, give something to, to help, um, you know, with the wording that, that you would, that you would like to, to see as part of it.
Can I second his motion? Is there ever a second?
There is not, yeah. Okay. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to adopt the Sunflower, Cottonwood, and Virtual, is that correct?
Districts and Substitutes.
And Substitute. Tonight, and to weigh on.
PHS.
The high school, middle school, and district and employee?
No, just PHS, PMS, and employee.
Do I need to say that again? Are we clear?
Sorry to make that so complicated.
That's okay, no, that's, great, good discussion. We have a motion and a second to approve the Sunflower, Cottonwood, Virtual, District, and Substitute. All those in favor?
Before we vote, I think we should, if, give administration more direction. So, how that comes to be for that, so they know where you want them to, where we want them to go. But that, that's just my comment. But we, we, we don't like it, we need to tell them what, what we want.
I, I think, is, is that something that can be wrote out more, that we need to have right now, or can be wrote out before, to have it available for new, I mean?
I believe.
So we can, it can be worked on in the course? So we can, it can be worked on in the course of.
Scott, are you just talking, like, what is our plan going to be?
I'm saying, yeah, we can move on from this, but we need to give.
Have a plan.
There was a legislative proposal that had a statewide anti-bullying that was not, like, approved by legislature, that was, would be a good starting point, in my opinion, this is a little.
I don't mind doing the work.
Yeah.
But what I don't want is, I don't want to receive six or seven different opinions. I try to put it together, and then come back next month and go, I don't like this, I don't, I mean, I want to work, I want to try to do it to where, let us, give us direction on what, so we can try to come up with, with wording that you all, all want, or we're, we're hitting the target that you're, you're aiming to hit.
Overall, I liked the way the high schools was written, because I think any sort of physical contact should have a stiffer penalty than the bullying and harassment type stuff, and, but.
So maybe subcategorize, are they subcategorized in the high school handbook?
Yeah. But, uh, and I, I'm, in my speed, in my, you, I read it earlier today, but.
That's, that's okay. There is a clear definition of what bullying and different forms of harassment looks like. There are spelled out consequences. Mr. Meek referenced the protracted point at the bottom of our list to prescribe consequential drugs in order that egregious offenses may warrant, um, stiffer penalties. And we don't always follow it in order, because an egregious offense will get you right to step through sometimes.
Yeah, well, and that's, I just feel like if we could have more, I feel like the high school one had a lot more teeth to it than what the middle school one did, and I.
But it still needs more, the high school.
I don't know that.
Maybe just clarification.
Maybe just clarification on some of it. I, I, I think, and, and the way I took it was the four different steps at the bottom kind of applied to everything above it, like harassment and bullying and all that stuff. And may, maybe, and if that's the way it is, then I would say it's probably okay, in my opinion, but, I mean.
May I ask a question? Are you specifically talking about the bullying and harassment that we have listed on our handbook? Part that you're talking about, because we, I mean, we have that same statement that, that Jeff alluded to as well, as far as egregious, egregious offenses may warrant, the legislature to assign a harsher. I, I'm just trying to understand what, what you would like us to change, which. You know, you want us, wanting us to say that physical altercation is automatic, three days, five days, or something like that? Is that what you're?
I, I, I think it just had.
I'm familiar with what the high school has, and we'll talk about some things, but.
That was, it felt like the, when I read the middle school one, um, it listed a bunch, like, all the harassment things. I don't know, finally, let's see. Like, it looked like the same, it, it was the same breakdown for, like, the use, like Christian said, for fighting, it was number three, and use of profanity was number four. So they both had the same type of breakdown, and I feel like, um, maybe we need to break down those behaviors a little bit better, where, where, I, I don't know, I, I feel like certain things should be punished a little harsher to keep, to stop them to, from continuing to happen versus.
So maybe more clarification, like, on accountability?
I guess, I just, I don't, I don't know, I just feel like if, if we have, if the amount of bullying and harassment and stuff that's going on, maybe we need, as a district, we need stiffer penalties for some of it, to try to stop some of it.
I feel like.
That's it, that's just my, that's my thoughts, I am.
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to go back, I'm going to try to, I mean, and, 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 but I, I need, I need, we need clear direction on what the wording will look like. So if, if, if it is, hey, I like the way the high school is written, and that, I mean, then we can, we can use that as a basis, or we can.
I don't know how anybody else feels about it, like I said, I like the high school better personally, probably, um, because it is more specific. I, I don't think that's a bad start, I, I mean.
Does the high school have the same four?
The same four things or similar, yes.
Yes.
But those are for, but it lists those out for, like, bullying and harassment and stuff versus, um, I think the fighting is separate, I think.
It is.
Yeah.
And I, I go back to the four, I think more, again, as a parent, okay, so the first is a warning, peer mediation, we send the kids back in class together. Second is an after-school detention, we send the kids back into class together. So they're not, you're, we're not even separating the kids until the third offense, when the kid gets an in-school suspension. And then, I mean, the fourth offense is out-of-school suspension, so, I mean.
Well, in the high school, it says third offense is three days out, and then fourth offense is five days out. I'm looking at the high school, I don't know what the middle school.
Yeah, she was reading the middle school and, yeah.
Okay, so I do have to correct one thing, not to, not to debate it, but I don't read where it says, like, first, warning, peer mediation, go back to class, I mean.
Well, I mean, I think.
That part of it, now, I understand, so.
It's not worded that way, but that's what, but that's the action that's taken, after their peer mediation, you know.
They didn't keep them separate then?
They ended up in the same class together. What?
I was, oh, sorry.
After that mediation, I mean, they're not, they're sent.
I very, I mean, I won't speak for others, but, I mean, very seldom do I see somebody come in, in a class and go, I mean, and then go right back to, to that class, or maybe go back to the next class, or what have you, but. I just want to make sure that, because I didn't read that part of him there, so, okay. Well, let's, let's start, start with the high school, and we'll.
As, as far as changes made to it, or?
We'll go with.
I, yes, I need, I need to know what, I'm, we're happy to do the work. I need to know what the wording is that you want, so we can make that happen.
Where are you seeing it on the high school? Number are you on?
Page nineteen.
Are you talking about the floor?
Yeah, the school.
Yes, yeah, page nineteen towards the bottom, just prescribed consequences. Does middle school even do Friday school? Is that just a high school thing?
They have in the past, but have not had.
Okay, I didn't think so.
But they have Friday school versus, I mean, so that's a little different, after-school detention versus Friday school. And then, and then your third offense, three day, and then, then your other is, is, you know, fourth offense is different, um, five day versus, or one to three days.
So the high school says second offense, Friday school, or in-school suspension. See, the middle school could do in-school suspension.
Correct. An in-school suspension, I mean, happens when we can, when we can cover in-school suspension, because we don't have anybody specifically for, you know, we don't have an in-school suspension room.
So what are you doing with it?
Used to many years ago, but, I mean, that, that is not happening.
What do you do when that's not covered?
Well, I mean, we cover it by the person standing in the office, and, and, you know, working in, in the office, but we need to make sure that we have somebody there, you know, that, you know, that can, that can monitor us.
Sure.
And most time that can happen, but, but, I mean, there are, there are a few times that, you know, that doesn't happen.
So in the times that it doesn't happen, what do those kids do? Go back to class?
At times, I mean, it just, it, again, I can't, I can't be specific, because every situation is different, and so forth. And that's, and that's the thing with, with this, the hard part is, I mean, it is very easy, if this, then this. I mean, that's the, it's the, um, it's how do you work with situations, knowing that is the same, and this isn't, this isn't right or wrong, is, is it the same, does the same punishment occur for a sixth grader versus an eighth grader? Because developmentally, you're in a big, you're, you know, that's a big difference. Now, you can argue, you can argue, or, you know, both sides of that. So I'm not, again, pro or conning, but those are the things that, that you, you know, that.
I guess.
That we work through, so, to get back to the discussion, I, direction on how you would like to.
Yeah, this is my opinion, and I was looking at the high school one here. I feel like possession, use, or, or threat to use a weapon, and illegal acts should probably be moved up with, um, the consequences of fighting and laying your hands on another kid, and have the same consequences. Those three should have the same consequences as the stiffer consequences. And the disrespect of self or others, harassment, sexual harassment, racial harassment, all that kind of stuff would fall under bullying and stuff, in my opinion, and fall under the prescribed consequence section of the first offense with the warning, and second offense, to where there, the consequences are not quite as stiff for those things, whereas the other three things have stiffer consequences, I, I, if that, if that's some sort of an outline, I don't know.
So almost two of them.
Well, that's kind of what I liked about it, I, I don't know, um, I don't know if that makes any sense, Jeff.
It does, so fighting and bullying and harassment are the only two that I found in our handbook that have spelled out specific consequences.
Yeah.
So we have to rely on what is previous practice been? And so, in high school, we work very hard to say, when's the last time we had this issue? We look that issue up, and we make sure that we give an applicable consequence for that. And the, the other thing to note, specifically on the bullying harassment, where we thought it was important to spell out consequences, it states at the top that those are minimum consequences.
Yes, yes.
So we do one day, and we do two-day suspensions, that's not, because it's somewhere in the middle. There is a separate handbook that I haven't seen for years, um, that spells out, um, behavioral consequences for our district. I can't tell you the last time I needed to refer to it, because again, it's been, we've decided what consequences are for behaviors, and we don't need to refer to that anymore, because we know that that practice is aligned with that name. I don't know, Mr. Meek, if you know that handbook that I'm talking about? It was, it was old when I started in the school a long time ago.
Does that help at all?
I don't know, that's, that's, sorry, that's, that's my, uh.
Well, we'll do our best, and we'll try to, we'll try to have something for, for next, for next month. Hopefully, we can, we can get what you're looking for. Sorry, Michelle.
That's okay, so, we have the motion and the second to approve some of the handbooks. And, okay, so now, all of those in favor of, of agreeing the ones we said, raise your hand, please. So that's six of us. And now, Justin has, um, something to talk to us about with the exposure control plan.
So exposure control plan, um, the big change is, is taking custodians from being a classification two employee to a classification one employee. And so, just to refresh, classification two employee is offered a Hep B vaccine if they are exposed in an incident, whereas a classification one employee, they are all offered a Hep, Hep B vaccine at higher. And so, proposal is to move custodians up into that classification one, then the summary will go through a, offer that vaccine to all current custodians, and then future practice, such as part of our onboarding practice for the classification one employees, is they get that at onboarding. And we have a declaration waiver they sign, either saying, I do want to have a vaccine, or I do not. And if they do, then work with my, my health department to provide that vaccine. Uh, they're a bit checking around, just, we use Concentra for most of our work comp claims, they're significantly more expensive, um, for that type of vaccine. The health department has been a very good partner for us as far as costs go. Same thing with TV tests, TV tests are way more affordable, if I can send someone to the health department, than even the primary care physician, or if I send them to Concentra, it's about three times the cost. And the rest of it is just minor changes, dates, formatting, things like that. So the only real, one substantive change was, um, is custodians.
I'm motioning to approve the exposure control plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the exposure control plan of twenty twenty-five. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. About five of us? Next, um, we need to, we're asked to approve submission of the cost of living resolution from the March twenty twenty-five board meeting, to be submitted to the county clerk for the November twenty twenty-five ballot. And Matt has a.
So you're, you're aware that in March, you, you approved the resolution subject protest petition, uh, for cost of living. There was a successful, um, protest petition, which means to, um, the next step would be, um, is to actually, to approve that it be put on the November, um, ballot for, for, about, by the, by the, um, part of the election process.
If we don't approve that, what happens?
If you don't approve the ballot, then, then it.
Then there's a tax that goes into place, right?
Then it doesn't go on the ballot.
It doesn't go on the ballot.
No, it doesn't go on the ballot, but if you read the actual KSA language, it wouldn't allow it to even be approved if we, so if you choose not to send the language to the clerk.
If you don't, if you, if you choose not to send the language, so, lack of a motion or whatever, then, then there's no ballot, um, language to go, and so there wouldn't be a vote, and so then.
So no tax, so a vote would be.
Then there's no option for it, so it doesn't, it'd be, that would be the same as voting on and being voted down.
I was just.
I think that during the petition, a lot of people actually just wanted to have the opportunity to vote for it, they weren't necessarily against it, and I think that's what we should have been.
So are you making a motion?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the submission of cost of living resolution from the March twenty twenty-five board meeting, to be submitted to the county clerk for the November twenty twenty-five ballot. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. And six.
Madam President, I move that we go into executive session with Jimmy and Matt pursuant to negotiations in order to protect privacy interests in negotiating a fair and equitable contract, and that we return to open session in this room at, oh, shoot, eight fifteen? Right, I think there's a twenty.
Eight ten.
Eight ten.
Fifteen, please.
Fifteen minutes.
Oh. Eight ten. Second.
Okay, so, a, a motion and a second, go into executive session, all of them in favor. Okay, we have six seconds. Okay, we have six seconds. Okay, so, and are we missing anything today? No, okay. Now, uh, we have some action items. So first of all, do we have a motion to approve the 2025-26 negotiated agreement and 2025-26 and 26-27 district calendars?
I motion to approve the negotiating agreement and district calendar 2025-26.
So we've got a motion and a second, all of those in favor, please raise your hands.
Who's the second?
Oh, did I, did we not have a second?
No, I thought Chris should have.
All second, but.
I thought Michelle was second.
No, I think my brain was right.
All right, so Sean's second?
All second, it's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second now, all of those in favor, please raise your hands.
Thank you.
I've got six. Next is, do we have a motion to approve the 2025-26 salary increase, non-classified directors, administrators at 4.02%?
Motion to approve salary increase. A second.
So we've got a motion and a second, all of those in favor of approving, please raise your hands.
Six.
Do we have a motion to approve the 2025-26 classified salary increase of 56 cents an hour and 2025-26 para calendar?
Motion to approve classified salary increase and para calendar.
Second.
A motion and a second, all of those in favor, raise your hands.
Six.
We have a motion to approve 2025-26 classified hiring schedule increase of 40 cents per hour.
Motion to approve classified hiring schedule. A second.
We've got a motion and a second, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. About six of us, okay.
Madam President, I move that we go into executive session with the board pursuant to personal matters of non-직원 personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and it moves turn to open session in this room at eight twenty eight? Give us fifteen minutes, right?
Do we need a second on that? Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to go into executive session, all of those in favor, all of those in favor, please raise your hands.
So that's.